Yes, sir. Let us bow our head with... Heavenly Father, we come at this appointed time thanking you for the bountifulness of all of your great goodness. And we thank you and give you praise, glory, and honor for all things because all things work together for the good for those that love you and are called by your purpose. We thank you for our mayor and for our council persons. And we thank you Lord for each official that is here and each person that is here today. As we come, Lord, we ask that you throw your arms around the families in Connecticut, in Birmingham, and all of the persons who are going through tragedy and doing the ordeal tonight. And ask that you would just throw your arms around those families and comfort them, Lord, as only you know how. And help us, Lord, to be mindful of the fact that in the morning it could very easily be our little city or it could be any place, Lord, but look over us and let your God, angels, Lord, guide us and strengthen us and keep us under protection, Lord, to your holy will. Go to all of our children who are in school here in this, in Macon County, and not only in Macon County, but throughout the land and country in the name of Jesus, Lord. We just ask it all in your name because you are the reason for the season. Go with this deliberations tonight. Let us have peace and let us have answers, Lord, and let's have vision, Lord. Because you said where there's no vision, the people perish. And we thank you for the vision of our people and guide us now and strengthen them. Those who have just left and made their presentations, help us, Lord, to train up our children, Lord, while they're young so that when they're older, they will not depart from it, Lord. And so the smoking or whatever the situation is, if we begin early and start early in your name, Lord, we won't make the mistakes like some of us did. In the name of Jesus, we ask it all. Now go with us and keep us in your care. In the name of Jesus, we ask it all. Amen.
Thank you, Chairman. Roll call.
Mayor Johnny Ford.
Here.
Councilman Lawrence Hager Jr.
Here.
Councilman Frank Christopher Lee II.
Here.
Councilwoman Allen Whitehead.
And Councilwoman Georgia Moon.
Here.
Please let the minister reflect that all members of the council are present. Again, we want to say good evening to all of you and a Merry Christmas and happy holiday season to all of you. And thank you so very much for attending this council meeting. The Honorable Jacqueline Galette, this would be a good time for you to come if you did not resolve that you and the city manager meet today.
Yes, thanks, I did discuss it. I'm satisfied.
Thank you, Your Honor. We're always happy to have our utility board members attend our meetings. Ms. Diane Robinson, you also submitted a letter. This would be a good time for you to come in reference. Tell us about Our Town and the theater program. I think all of you have copies of the letter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening.
Good evening.
Council members and city manager. Should I read this or just...
Sorry, I have three minutes, so you however you like.
I'll read it because it's very complete. This is to the mayor and city council members. As director of Tuskegee Repertory Theater and on behalf of the board of its board of directors and members, I am asking you as our elected city officials to allow the city of Tuskegee to become a primary partner with Tuskegee Repertory Theater in seeking $120,000 in founding and funding from the National Endowment for the Arts in a special program called Our Town Grants Project. This project requires that local arts institutions partner with local governments and/or local agencies to make art a major instrument for cultural and economic enrichment in their communities. The money from the grant would be used to fund the Tuskegee Repertory Theater 2014 Cultural Heritage Season, a season of three major original productions which would reflect the cultural legacy of historic Tuskegee. Tuskegee Repertory Theater would provide the artistic leadership and resources. We are asking that the city become our primary partner by declaring Tuskegee Repertory Theater the official City of Tuskegee Theater and promoting it as such locally and throughout the state of Alabama and the nation, thereby providing TRT with a very valuable primarily in-kind marketing tool for the company and for its heritage season. This joint effort between the city of Tuskegee with financial support on this level, we feel tremendously benefit the citizens of our city and our county, young and old, black and white, in so many areas, including cultural and educational enrichment, entertainment and recreation, and last but not least tourism by bringing the hundreds of tourists who already visit our sites into the heart of our city and county and putting Tuskegee, which is already a destination point for African-American history and achievement, on the road to becoming a destination point for African-American theater as well. We respectfully ask that you consider our request. We apologize for the fact that it will require your immediate response in order for the application to be completed and submitted by January 14th. That's the deadline. But we believe that having the city government of historic Tuskegee work with Tuskegee Repertory Theater with its 21-year track record of bringing that history to life through theater makes it a potentially award-winning proposal. We ask for your assistance. Give us an opportunity to give this proposal a try. And if it is approved, the project would start September 2013 and conclude October 2014. And we thank you sincerely for your consideration of our request. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions for any members of the council?
Requests for designation. Requests for designation.
Yes, it's designation as official. Yes, and for your approval for us making you our primary partner is a very important part of the grant. The city would have to be designated as the primary partner. And we are asking that that be promotional, mostly in kind. If you just said we are that, that would be a great promotional tool for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For you, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Although we are very honored, this would not call for any monetary outlay at this time, just in kind.
That's right.
Please reemphasize that.
It does not require monetary, any monetary contribution. Your in-kind support of us being the city theater company would be a great marketing tool. It would help us. Thank you.
Like for example, the Shakespeare Theater is the official theater of the state of Alabama. And they promote it. I mean, the theater is big business for Montgomery and the region, the river region. We have also, the city in the past and the county, the multicultural center has served as our official hospitality and visitor's center for the city. And they'll be coming to us soon as well to ask us to reiterate that. That place has become the official place for tourists when they come, the human rights and civil rights of multicultural center. So essentially what she's asking for is for us to designate finally an official city theater so that she can apply for funding. And she's not asking for cash funds, but instead in kind and support. Councilwoman Whitehead.
Ms. Diane Robinson.
Yes, ma'am.
We are, I am, and I believe the council will be happy to serve in this, you know, this area.
Thank you.
And it's past due. You've done such a great job in Tuskegee with your theater, keeping it open and trying to encourage us to come. And if we just jump on board and work with you, we can help you move it forward. Great idea.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Councilwoman Lakey.
Well, I just, I just think anytime we have the opportunity as a council to support, you know, a positive entity of our community like the Tuskegee Repertory Theater, we need to do that because, you know, Ms. Robinson stated that they would use, it would help them to market the theater to the world. But we also have to think about this is going to help market Tuskegee as well. And I think we will benefit for having, you know, anybody that looks at Tuskegee and they see that we have a rich cultural, you know, presence in the arts. I think that can only help our city, so I'm in support.
Okay, good. So, Mr. City Manager, at some point do we need to do a little resolution, MOU, or just a motion would be in order?
Just a motion is in order.
Okay, so when we get to the mid, the approval of the agenda, I want to put that particular item on.
The grant application requires a letter from the highest official in the city.
Oh, yeah, we write a letter, support, whatever. In fact, you can draft it up for us. No problem. But no problem at all. We do this for any, in fact, any nonprofit organization in the city. If you find some money that we can help you get it, get it. We want to help you, especially when it doesn't have... Some of these require cash to match, but this one you can use in kind. And if there is ever some cash, you'll bring it back and we'll talk about it. But the point is you have to grab this money when it's available, particularly at the end of the year. Okay, so that's one item. The other item, we have an executive session on later on this evening. And the other one is town hall meeting. I circulated a notice this coming Thursday. We invite the public to come out and let's just talk about at the end of the year, we'd like to have a town hall meeting and hear from our citizens in terms of what your suggestions are, what your recommendations are, what problems you may have, what you think our priorities should be for the coming year. We can kind of look back over the last year, not the whole year. We hadn't been here in the full year. But this is an open meeting. We'll be talking about the future of our city. So there's a flyer. And we want to do that on Thursday at 7:00 PM. We invite the council members to be here. It's not an official meeting. Five, what did I say? Seven, okay, five. Yeah, I was looking at the seven here. Five on, we're trying to make it early. And we're going to invite the other agencies from across the city, like the Housing Authority, the Board of Education, Community Action Agency, all of the public agencies, the various charities will come in at a year-end session and just, let's just talk about the future of our city. So seven, I mean 5:00 PM. Any other citizens' communications? Here's the time. Yes, you have one, go right. Please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. I thought we covered concerns in the work session.
Oh, okay.
But Ms. Lisa Thornton wanted some corrections in the minutes. And I told her that I would try to relay to the council what she thought she had said and what was actually in the minutes. So do we want to put that under...
Or you can address it now. We can make these changes so when we vote on the minutes, you...
We can have that in here.
Yeah.
Yeah. I want to try to say what she said and if she would like to add something.
Is she here?
Yes. In the minutes, she said that she has some corrections to the minutes and that she would like to carry them over to the agenda. One of her corrections was at... Ms. Thornton, could you come up please and tell, because she had three corrections to the agenda.
Dear Honorable Mayor Ford, Honorable Councilman Lawrence Hager, Honorable City Council Member, Lee Whitehead and more, and City Manager, Mr. Davidson's staff, God bless you all. Regarding the city council meeting last, it was basically these items. It was just getting clarification about the open container. That's what I had a question about. And also I asked would I have an opportunity to speak my piece about the bus station. And then I also wanted to know what was the latest standing or what was, we're still working on the repealed of the city budget and also about having the special meetings posted outdoors. All of this is in detail here. And then for, that's for here. But I also had something for this meeting, but that's what the correction was, which you have there. Because what I, what I read was, that wasn't that. That's not what I said in the three minutes, citizens' three minutes. It was something different. That was in the minutes.
Other words, you would like the minutes corrected as you saw, as you...
Yes, I'd like the minutes corrected as what I've written down here.
Okay.
This is what I was saying during the citizens' three minutes.
I think I sit and flirt together with her and if there's anything different, she can change it. So I sit and flirt with her, be happy to correct it if she has the order that you set.
Okay, and then also when it's time for citizens, I have two items for this week.
Why are you here? Yes, Ms. Manager, no problem. You all can get with her on the minutes.
We'll go right with you.
Okay.
We don't put that type of stuff in our minutes. We were telling classes not to put that stuff, that type of information in the minutes.
Well, what was...
It's okay, it's all right. You'll get with it and work it out. You're the city manager, please. It'll be okay. Stay calm, it's all right.
I just wanted to be correct what they said that I said during that time because that's not what I said during that time. Okay, for this time, here's my question to, do the... Due to the city manager's contract ending and not being renewed in 2013 term, how is our city manager being selected and when will we know who it is and when they are scheduled to start? That's one question I was wanting to ask. And then the other one is, I'd like to request, I don't know if this is the time to ask this, but if we could get, oh, yeah, if we could get like just the minutes emailed or either like maybe five or 10 cents instead of having to pay 75 cents a page for the minutes of the meeting, I would appreciate being able to get it for free if it was, if they could get an email to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you so very much. And we'll keep you posted on the city manager in terms of the selection process in the future. And of course, all of this will be made public. Now, Mr. Manager, I'm not sure what you all, five cents or what do you...
There's a fee if you do a reproduction of public documents. However, the case of minutes and the agenda, one of the things we're working on with the, with the webmaster is we will upload all of that to the website so citizens go look on it at no cost. They can just go open up that, the information for that meeting and it'll be there. So that's one of the changes to the website, that information be uploaded.
Are there others?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and city council members and those in front. I'm not here tonight really to talk about city council, but I am, I'm almost at a state, in a state of panic. As you know, I have, along with the school system, I have taken it upon ourselves to take students to the inauguration in January. And my check must be with the travel agent by Friday. I need some more help. I must have some more help. $1, $2, $3, $5, $10, $200, $100, whatever you can give us. The, all proceeds will go to, you make your checks payable to the Macon County Board of Education and that is, that deduction, it is tax deductible. But I've got to get these students to Washington DC. The little girl, the little second grader calls me every day, Dr. Harrod, when are we leaving? And we're not leaving until January the 19th. So please see me before you leave with your contribution. And to the city of Tuskegee, can you amend your, your, your budget? Whatever support we can get, we really, I have to do it. And of course, whatever the final tab is, I guess I'll have to go and borrow it because we must go to the inauguration. The students have been promised and I will take them to the inauguration. See me. I was going down to Victory Land, but I found out I couldn't get in. You'd have to stand in line, so I'm going to stay here with you all. Thank you very much.
They'll roll you in. They would roll you in. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. What you may want to do is ask the superintendent to address.
We're working, I'm going to them Thursday. We've already met and we will be at the board on Thursday. But individual citizens feel free to please see me.
Are there others from other citizens, written recommendations that you'd like for us to put on the agenda before we adopt it?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yes, Your Honor. I mean, my good classmate, Ms. Stappless.
My name is Daphne Edwards and I just want to compliment you all on some things that I have brought before you. And I still have some more. The last meeting, my three minutes ran out, but I noticed a lot of times the three minutes don't run out, but on me, they ran out. So I would like to put...
No problem, thank you, Todd. I shouldn't have told you that. Go ahead.
Okay, what I would like to do is continue with the recommendation of the new committees in Tuskegee.
Right.
I know you all have done something. I want to compliment you on the one that you have already worked on. I would like to have a suggestion. If you put in council person on those committees, could they come back at least once a month and make a report exactly what's going on? But people would know. And in that way, we won't get things misunderstood in the community and bad information gets out. But I'd like to continue with this. Now, I stopped last Tuesday night on the Tuskegee Citizen Leadership Academy. I would love to see we have an academy where the citizens in Tuskegee will learn exactly how government should run and exactly what we should say and when we should say it. Okay, that's number one. Number two, we may already have a historical committee. If we do have it, let them bring it up to date and see some things that we're all working on, but we won't be doing the same thing. Number three, a grant and composure committee. Someone for a committee where we can write more grants for Tuskegee and get more money in. The next one would be a downtown development committee. We may already have one, but if we do, we need to meet and let people know what's going on. The next one can be combined with the Clean City. That's a recycling committee. You put that in with the Clean City Committee and we could do some better jobs on recycling. Your next one is a planning board. I think we already have a planning board, but we need to, the planning board need to come back and let us know something that's going on.
Planning Commission.
Correct, okay. Airport Board or Commission or whatever. I think you're already working on one of those now.
We have an airport authority.
Authority, okay. The next one is a personnel board, okay? And I hope you're going to say you have one because you do. I haven't heard anything and I've been back four years.
I don't think the city has a personnel board. I know they have Department of Human Resources, both utility and general government.
Now, in that board, I'm understanding that they don't want to help prepare the personnel policies.
Sure.
How that goes on, right?
Sure.
And the next one, I would love to see this, a help desk call. You call one number and that is it. And it will get taken care, it will get to the right place. And then that call will let people know that the completion has been done. Thank you, and if you, and one other thing. Montgomery has a recycling grease. This, I'm going to give it to you all. You can give it to the Clean City or whatever, give it to Mr. Davidson. But you can, you can have these containers at each home. You put your grease in it and it'll be recycled.
That's okay, we'll take it. We'll take it, we'll take whatever you've got. Thank you, great. All right, thank you so much. Right. Mrs. Good.
Good evening, everyone, and happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you, same to you.
My name is Lenora Good. First of all, I would like to say to the city of Tuskegee and to this council that I would like to sincerely thank the best city manager in the state of Alabama that this town, that any town could ever have, that has done a great job without an executive assistant compared to all the other city managers in the state of Alabama. Single-handedly has he kept us from bankruptcy and out of all kinds of financial problems, et cetera. But he has done the best he can with what he had to work with. And coming from me and from my family and from those of us that support this ceremonial city manager council form of government, we want to thank you. And God bless you.
Honorable council members, this would be a good time for us to entertain a motion thanking our city manager for his service. You know, we talked about this some time ago. We haven't adopted the budget yet, but very timely, Mrs. Good have it on the budget. But I think it's always appropriate to thank someone for their service. And, you know, we discussed it once before. So whatever the council wishes to do that, because we're coming down to the end of the year. Yeah, matter of fact, we had one drawn up, remember? We could revisit it and, and... So are there any other council matters to come before the council? I'd like for us to adopt the agenda and place that on as one of the items to, to, to be voted on tonight. If not, the chair would entertain a motion that we adopt, adopt the agenda. Oh, we got, oh, have another. Mr. Welch, bless your heart, come on around, one of our distinguished veterans.
Okay.
Yes.
I'd like to...
Mr. Welch, take your time. What about this...
I'd like to say good afternoon.
Good evening, Mr. Welch.
And I'm glad to see everybody here and the good motive about everything that we need for our city. So one thing that we have a veteran that then here and lost their life. So we have no help, no memorial for our veteran. So we want for your help to help us to get our veteran with a memorial. If there ain't nothing but a flower, whatever can do, we should do that, please. Thank you very much and hope everything will come out correct. Every other town, city has a thing, like Auburn, Tallahassee, Montgomery, somehow we can, okay? We have a lot of veterans, they are dead and nobody ought to do it. So we was done, one time we was done pretty good, but we, I don't know, I ain't want to put that situation, but please help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Welch. And I hope we'll have some volunteers who would be willing to serve on this committee. We need to certainly do that. Mr. Welch, you know, you and I have talked about it. Chairman Maxwell has talked about it as well. So it's time now to do it for our veterans. I'll take any volunteers who want to serve on it.
I'd like to serve on it.
Oh, okay, all right. From the council standpoint, I need a couple council person, Councilmember Lee and Hager. And from, and for the community, okay, let's get some community. So I want to, because we want this to happen. TS?
One thing.
Dothan?
Yeah.
Let's get the committee first. Dothan, Mr. Welch, my brother Bay, the Honorable Jackie Galette, other veterans? Oh, yes, Felician?
Yes.
Great, outstanding. Our veterans deserve this, so we need to get on with it. And I want this committee to also address cemetery, cemeteries in this city as well. How we, you know, that's, that's... How we, you know, that's, that's, that's an issue, the cemeteries and additions of our cemeteries.
Honorable Mayor.
Yes. Just hold one minute. So, we're clear, did you get all of the committee names you got? Okay, good. Now, TS, you ready?
One thing with what Mr. Welch was saying, we've already met almost for a year.
Okay.
The only thing that we need help with is identifying a site.
Okay.
And if we can get that done, you know, then we can apply for help and assistance from various agencies.
Okay.
Now, the other thing that I have-
Before you leave that, would you be kind enough, since you all have already met, then this group meet with council members and bring them up to date in terms, no need of starting over.
I'm certain we could, that shouldn't be wrong.
Okay.
Now, we have a cancer support group that we have formed and we're trying to get it off the ground, but we had a meeting yesterday evening and one of the things that we want to do, since it's a new council and a new utility board, we want to get on the agenda in January and let us tell the city of Tuskegee about Relay for Life.
Okay.
And one of the persons that would be with me is Mrs. Darifah Hurd.
Okay.
And we'd like to get maybe three, five minutes to talk about Relay for Life.
Wonderful.
And just put us on the agenda.
Wonderful. Mr. Clerk and Deputy Clerk, if you all would go ahead and put them on the next agenda for Relay for Life. You got it.
American Cancer Society.
Yes. All right. Any others? Being none, I'd like to go ahead and entertain a motion that we approve the agenda with those amendments. Help me, Mr. City Manager, with those amendments.
You've got two items, Tuskegee Repertory Theater proposal and appreciation to the city manager.
Okay, great. All right. Chair will entertain a motion for approval of the amended agenda.
So moved.
Moved by the council member at large, Mr. Heygood, second by Council Lady Whitehead. It's been moved and promptly seconded. Questions, comments? Those in favor of the motion, please give the minute comments. Being none, those in favor of the motion, give the sign of aye. Poses nay, so be it, the motion is carried. We will now go to approval of the amendments as amended and will be amended by Ms. Thornton and you all just get together and work it out. Chair will entertain a motion for approval of the amendments as they will be amended. Then you can bring them back next time, but in the meantime, let's go ahead and approve them to be amended.
Chairman, I'm so moved that we approved the amendments with the corrections, necessary corrections as indicated.
Moved by council member at large, Heygood, second by council lady. Moved, questions, comments? Those in favor of the motion, give the sign of aye.
Aye.
Poses nay, so be it, the motion is carried. Going now to communications from the office of the mayor. City council workshop, that went well and if the city manager, maybe we could just send a note to the group that was here earlier from the state and ask them to work with all of us in the community to do a health despair at this conference, working with the university. Couple of items we added, one, the Repertory Theater joined with them, designating them as our city theater. Chair will entertain a motion to that effect.
Move that we name the Tuskegee Repertory Theater our official theater of the city of Tuskegee.
It's been moved and promptly seconded by a host of council persons with the understanding that this also includes participating with them in applying for the grant in the partnership relationship. Moved and promptly seconded. Questions, comments? Those in favor of the motion, please give the sign of aye.
Aye.
Poses nay, so be it, the motion is carried. The next item, chair will entertain a motion that we adopt a resolution expressing our appreciation, our sincere appreciation to our city manager, Mr. Alfred Davis.
Chairman, I'm so moved we adopted the resolution recognizing and expressing our appreciation to the city manager Davis for his number of years' service in Tuskegee.
Second by council lady. Moved, questions, comments? Those in favor of the motion, please give the sign of aye.
Aye.
Poses nay, I think, let us stand and give a standing ovation for his service. Thank you. Next item, one of the things I'd like to do during this mayor's communications report from our negotiations on the Internal Revenue Service indebtedness and, Mr. City Manager, you are the finance director, can give us a brief update on?
Harmony?
He's, he's out in the back right now, so he's coming. The Community Action, did you all get a copy of this? They're having their grand opening on tomorrow evening at 7:00 p.m. So council members, we are invited to go for the Community Action for their grand opening and citizens, we'd invite you to go as well because Community Action provides a very important service in many ways to our citizens and so they have their new location in Apple Park. Mr. Finance Director, just give us a brief update on the Internal Revenue Service indebtedness.
Okay, ma'am, thank you. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
A while back, as you know, we do have a debt with Internal Revenue Service and the court had requested that we look around and talk to the Internal Revenue in order to get that debt decreased. So, in the process of doing that, the mayor went to the Internal Revenue and got certain documents from them and certain instructions from them. Instructions that were given to him was to find a tax advocate. So that's what we did. We went to the Taxpayer Advocate Service in Birmingham. They assigned us a permanent tax advocate to represent the city with the Internal Revenue Service. That person's supposed to come on board and start acting on January the 4th. Prior to that, certainly, they needed certain documents prepared so that they could carry out their service. And that document was the Form 843, which is a request for abatement. And that abatement is supposed to be done per quarter, where we are asking the service to abate a penalty for each one of those quarters individually. Okay? So once they do have all that information in place and on January the 4th, they will start acting with the Internal Revenue Service.
Okay. Okay, good. Any questions? You might add that yours truly, as well as the district attorney, has been in contact with the Internal Revenue Service per the court's request. Okay. All right. Okay, Your Honor, yes.
And we might want to add that we have made, we might want to add that we have-
Turn your mic on.
Was it a $20,000 payment?
Payment?
Yes. Did we, now?
Okay. Yes, we did. Yes, we did. We, we are, we are behind on a $100,000 payment that we should have made in August. We have an hourly payment down to 22,000. As of today, we owe 22,000, so we should be able to get that 22,000 to them this week.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay. And also mention the fact that we did clear up those smaller ones that were lingering out there already.
Right. We haven't cleared it yet.
You will clear them up. Okay, great. All right. Thank you so very much. We'll move right ahead. Once, let me just conclude by saying that once we have met with Internal Revenue Service, with the lawyers, the district attorney and the financial staff, we will try to negotiate that down as far as possible. And once we come to, you know, get it down as far as possible, then we'll come back to the council and discuss moving ahead with a bond issue at that time, which would, the bond issue, which would be designed to clear up the indebtedness, that's number one. And number two, get released the city manager and Mr. Smith from his obligation. And number three, the city employees who have taken a 15% salary cut across the board, certainly address that issue in that bond issue and make sure that they no longer have to, to carry that burden. So we are moving right ahead and dealing with the Internal Revenue Service issue. And I must say publicly that the Internal Revenue Service has been very cooperative and I was very pleased to find that there is within the Internal Revenue Service this citizens' advocate division, just like within the U.S. Department of HUD, there is an advocate division that can help you if you're having a problem with a mortgage or trying to do a HUD program. Their responsibility is to look out for the citizen and so we are going to crown their shoulders and, and really ask them to look seriously at those penalties and try to get those, those reduced. There is $1.3 million in penalties of that $3.9 million, and so that's going to be the focus of our negotiations. Okay. Next item, let's go, if we can, to the SGA and other agencies. We're delighted to, Ms. Ortiz, if you would please come or the students would please come, we want to, we thank you all at the university for all you do in keeping us posted and we want to be helpful wherever we can.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, city council, Mr. City Manager, deputy clerks, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Attorney, I'm sorry. I wanted to say thank you again on behalf of the SGA. We certainly thank you for your continued support and as we mentioned last week, we are hosting a student leadership summit April 18 through 21 on campus and I believe I sent some information to the council and to Mr. City Manager requesting perhaps a resolution for that upcoming event and your consideration of that request for that resolution honoring those students in that event. This will be the first time that Tuskegee University will host it. Your consideration of that request will be appreciated.
Councilmember Lee, we always, this is your area, so.
Well, I fully support this. I've talked to Ms. Ortiz and the SGA about it and I'm looking forward to taking a part in the program and, you know, look forward to passing that resolution soon as we get together. I'd also recommend that, you know, you possibly apply for funding through the utilities board unless separate from here, but anytime we have opportunity to support something going on in Tuskegee University, we want to do that.
Fabulous. Thank you so much and I'll definitely pass that on to our SGA president. Thank you so much.
While you have the mic, you're not going to get the ball.
Oh, yeah. And we certainly are going to do something to honor the Tuskegee University football team for winning the SIAC championship. Just a matter of once everybody gets back from the Christmas holidays and we can get everybody together, we want to do something special and officially on behalf of the city to honor the football team.
You want to go ahead and make the motion to pass a resolution honoring them? We can get the turn to-
It's not me.
Well, we had it on once before. We would have to lift it off the table, but anyway, I'll leave it to you all, whatever you decide. We can do it whenever you're ready.
The best thing to do, Mr. Mayor, would be to have the written resolution right there and then you can adopt it and read it at the same time.
Okay. So, Councilmember Lee, if you want to ask them to do it for you, but whenever you're ready. Thanks, me. Okay. Oh, go ahead.
Good question. Will we expect that student representatives or will there be an increased number of students attending at that time? Will there be a large number of students or will they primarily be sent to represent?
We're planning for at least 150 students from HBCUs from across the nation and from black student unions. So the summit is basically designed to enhance and grow the leadership skills of the campus leaders. So we're planning for 150, but if we get more, of course, we welcome that.
Could you ask the, he's from Senegal, the international advisor to the president, he talked, we met about the international conference that's being planned next year, I believe. Ask him if he would come and give us an update on that.
I sure will, because we want to support that.
Is that, that his name?
Dr. Charles.
His wife, oh, his, yeah. His wife has the brave child.
Yes, I can, I can definitely pass along that message. Definitely will. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. King.
Thank you so much. All right. Is, is one of your student leaders you want to introduce? He's here all the time. Introduce him. We want to know Yavale Desar.
Hello, this is Oscar Austin. He's an alumni of Tuskegee and we work together.
All right. Glad to have you, young man. Glad to have you. Thank you. Okay, we'll move. Time is on us. City manager's communication, Mr. City Manager?
Good evening, Mayor, council. This afternoon, we have two items. Both of them are, have been advertised tonight for public hearing. Alcohol beverage license, the first is Mercy Enterprises 207 East Martin Luther King Highway. The request is for retail beer, all premises only, and retail table wine, all premises only. And the applicant, I think he's here?
Hello, where are you? Come on around. Okay, TS said, come on up here.
Public hearing has been announced.
Oh, this is my friend. How are you? A pride of Nigerian. I want to thank you so much for, you've been investing, we've been talking about investing in this community and you put your money where your mouth is. Get back again, so tell us what you're going to do. Well, wait a minute, excuse me. Do we need to declare a hearing?
Yes, it's public hearing.
Okay. Chair will entertain a motion that we declare this public hearing.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Heygood, seconded by, moved, questions, comments? Those in favor of the motion, give the sign of aye.
Aye.
Poses nay, so be it, motion is carried. Public hearings, please proceed.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor.
Yeah.
The council members, the city manager, deputy clerk, and the attorney. My name is Folon Shalushesongulabi. I'm known as Joshua.
Joshua.
I've been in this country for 13 years, in which, 13 years I spent in Tuskegee and I've been in business and I have alcohol license for 13 years in which I do not have any violation. So I have another business that I'm about to open, which is in downtown area and I'm requesting to have an alcohol license there. So I'm asking the Honorable Mayor, the council members and the citizens of Tuskegee to please approve me so that I can carry on with my business. Thank you.
Tell them where it is. It's a cloud place.
It's old cloud mark. It's on 207 East Martin Luther King Highway in Tuskegee.
And it's not going to be like it used to be in Jersey, folks hanging out? I see you already painted it up and cleaned it up.
Yes. And the people that knows me when I was a veteran knows- And the people that knows me when I was a veteran knows I don't play games and I don't allow hand-to-hand. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so it's now, yes, sir.
I had a question. Are we be selling gas there as well?
Yes, and it's going to be one of the cheapest gas in Tuskegee.
Oh, good man. What hours?
It's going to be open at six o'clock to midnight.
Oh, at least you get to midnight.
This place is good there, it's going to be twenty-four hours.
One of these days, we'll get to twenty-four hours. So I don't have to go to the wife, like, who's next? Did you finish, Councilman Lee? Okay. So you have gas.
Very need in our community, as we all know. You know, with the situation of how the gas stations are owned and, you know, it affects the price. So, you know, we have someone who's committed, not only, you know, they want to be open as a service station, but provide gas at a cheaper price. I think that's something that should be made.
Yeah. Well, we're glad to hear that, because, you know, the real problem is these service stations are owned by one company, and boy, when they've got a monopoly on it, I mean, they, the gas in Tuskegee is twenty, sometimes twenty, twenty-five cents higher than it is in other towns. So I'm glad to see you're going to be independent.
We already have gas there now.
Right, okay.
So we're just waiting to open up.
Okay, great. Yes, sir.
Mayor, I'd like to congratulate you and just, and as Councilman Lee said, we encourage it, we have someone bringing more gas downtown. We look forward to that, and extended hours, which is critically needed as far as business and activity. Only other suggestion I would have is that you get with the utilities department as much help as we can give you to get additional lighting around there since it's going to be open late at night, increase the security, and also that would encourage more citizens to come downtown to their area at night. If you can look at your lighting at night and make sure we have plenty of light around the facility.
All right.
It makes our senior citizens and others more comfortable as well. Thank you, though.
Thank you, sir. Are there any in opposition? Anyone in opposition?
You may have some more in favor.
Well, is there anyone in opposition?
Any more in favor?
Okay. All right, there's some more in favor, because we don't need to sit here all night here. Okay.
I want to commend Joshua on the work he's done on Notice of Highway and also on Franklin Road. And I think it would be a disservice to deny him the opportunity to serve us. One of the biggest complaints you hear from people coming to Tuskegee is just no place to get gassed after ten o'clock at night. And it needs to be midnight. And I'm sure that if he works with the police department and everybody like he has in the past, security for the building should not be a problem.
Okay.
And I just want to recommend that we support and we grant that license for him.
Well said. Well said. Others? Others in support of? Okay, we'll go to the oppositions. Oh. Oh, yeah, okay, go. Council Lady Whitehead.
I'm speaking. I'm a citizen. So I'm asking citizens.
Oh, okay, all right. Are there any other citizens?
She can speak.
We're learning, Madam, Deputy Clerk. Okay, listen now, everyone, please. Is there any others in support? I have to say it three times, any others in support? Any others in support? All right, being none, now we'll go to the oppositions. Any in opposition? Any in opposition? Any in opposition? None in opposition. Did I do it right, Will? I'm learning. It's coming back to me, quite frankly. That's pretty tight, right? Okay, the chair, we will entertain a motion that we close the hearing on Joshua's request.
Chairman, if there be no other comments from the.
Why is it so move?
Move by Council Lady Whitehead.
Second.
Seconded by the council member at large, Heygood. Questions, comments, those in favor of the motion, please give the sign of aye. Aye, aye. Opposed, same sign, by the same nay, I mean. All in favor of the motion, it is thereby carried. Okay, we're ready for the next one.
No. Take your vote.
Okay, all in favor of the motion. Thank you, I got plenty of tonight, boy. This must be Christmas time. All right, let's go. All in rate, all in favor?
Chairman, I mean, as the.
That's all right.
May I so move that we adopt the application for the license for alcoholic beverages at Mercy Enterprises at the location mentioned?
Second. Second. Move to proper second. Questions, comments, those in favor of the motion, give the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, so be it. Okay, we're clear. Now we're ready, yes? Now we're ready for the next one? Okay. Two, Tiger Den Bar and Grill, four five Funville Street, restaurant, retail liquor, applicant, Rod Alexander, public hearing announced. Chair, entertain a motion that we declare a public hearing for Tiger Den Bar.
I move that we open the public hearing on Tiger Den Bar Grill.
Okay. Shall we entertain second?
She's second.
Oh, Whitehead? Whitehead, second. Questions, comments, those in favor of the motion, give the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed, nay, so be it. Motion is carried. Hearing is open. We'll go with the, those in favor first and those against second. It's open. Ready? Rod, you want to come on?
Yes.
Part of the great Alexander family, backed up by his daddy. All right. Did you want to let, well, did you let age go before youth, or wisdom before youthfulness? All right, Boogie, I mean, Mr. Reddick. Oh, yeah. All right. Great.
I guess you can hear me.
Oh, yeah.
Big deal, man.
Thanks, yeah.
Councilmen, Mayor, and everybody, I'm here in behalf of my son.
All right.
And he's trying to establish a new business.
Yes, sir.
And we are here to support him.
All right.
He has a new business. And we want to apply for a little license he's trying to get. He's going to explain that to you all. And while he explains that to you all, but I want to let you all know that you all need to come by and take a look at this place and see what's going on, have dinner, enjoy yourself, and he might start doing some catering service, I don't know. So, but anyway, I'm here to support my son and his new business incident. I'm not going to take a bowl, you all, it's time to talk, and I can talk now, but.
And we're glad to have you in a good mood tonight, you know. Okay, Rod.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays. Merry Christmas.
Okay, I've got four five Funville Street, it's called Tiger Den Bar Grill. If you, it's a restaurant, good food, I mean, you know.
Good catfish.
Good catfish, or the catfish is selling good. Steak's a good, too, you can say. I'm just trying to give them a liquor license, my son is going to be running it, I'm just overseeing it.
Three generations, isn't that great? Give them a hand. Three generations. Have a good one.
So I'm trying to get my liquor license approved, so if people come in every day and say, you got some to drink? I said, not yet, I'm working on it.
All right.
So, got any questions?
Okay, great, good.
Oh, I have one question.
Oh, okay, yes, yes, yes.
Is this the old Busy Bee?
Yes, yeah, right on the street. Yes, ma'am. Tiger Den Bar Grill now.
Yeah.
Whole different atmosphere, whole different look.
I've been, I just didn't know.
Evening, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Councilman, anyone in attendance? I'm Marquis Swan. I'm also a citizen of Tuskegee, been here all my life. I'm behind my father, as well as my grandmother, contribute to the community. You know, we're not trying to, you know, just place a major emphasis on alcohol itself because it's a part of a business as well as our food. We take pride in our food, we feel like we have the best food in town. We're just trying to move up to the standards of other places besides Auburn among grammar, keep the business here within the community. And I hope that you all see it from my point of view, and thank you.
Well said. Does the mother want to speak up? Jeanette? Might as well, make it a family.
It's our family business, and I'm just supporting you.
Thank you. All right, so we got the whole family. Now, any others, any others in favor? Any others in favor? Any others in favor? Okay, good in favor. Now, those opposed? Those opposed? Those opposed? None opposed? Chair, will entertain a motion that we close the hearing? Oh, we have a question. Oh, you ready for a question? Okay, we're bringing to the council now. Well, we need to close the hearing first, and then we have the council.
Move that we close the public hearing.
Councilman Lee?
Second.
Seconded by Heygood. Questions, comments, those in favor of closing the hearing, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, so be it. Now, it's before the count, council, you can make whatever comments. Question, Whitehead?
Yes, Mr. Alexander.
Yes, ma'am.
It would be nice if you had a spot there where you could have a parking, so they wouldn't have to park on the street and get so crowded. You know, some of that property, you know, you need to inquire about some of the property next to your building across the street and see if you can use for parking.
Okay, we would.
Check it out. Mr. Colson, there's a building over there, and there's a lot of property around there, maybe you can get some parking space.
Okay. Right beside it, with the old, I can park over there, and plus, it's a park in the back. Somebody, Mr. Colson owned the land next door. We tried it, they said Tommy Lee might own it, she's cut the grass before, she's there in California, but I will check it out.
But I like the old storefront. It's really nice.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Councilwoman Whitehead. You took the words out of my mouth, that's what I was going to speak to, and I have had some of the food, so it's excellent food, as well as, we have two or three establishments now here to give us a choice, so we appreciate that, salads and the fish in particular, as the way I said. But my concern is the same, is Councilwoman Whitehead's about to park in it. We try to see whatever we can do to improve the parking situation there, because if you get people coming there, it gets popular, you have parking on both sides, it's kind of crowded up there. And we want to keep it as safe as possible. So let's, hopefully, we can work on that, see what options we have, like you said, across the street, if we can do something there, if we can convince them to allow us to indent that space to have some off, parking that does not, stack that parking together on the street, as much as we can do. But congratulations, and we look forward to it, and hopefully you work on the parking for us. Thank you, sir.
Councilman Lee?
Just want to add, you know, the best steaks in town, from what I've had so far. My brother, I think, came in a couple of weeks ago, tried it out, and was definitely impressed, so I'm glad that the business is there. Specifically, you know, I'm glad, not only for the whole community, but with Tuskegee University in my district, I'm glad it's a, you know, business that students can walk to, and, you know, we can, and you all can continue to serve the whole community, so.
Okay.
It's in the history, too, though, it's on Main Street.
All right. Got him fussing over you there, Alex. Okay, all in favor of granting the license? Chair, will entertain a motion to that effect?
I move that we issue an alcoholic beverage license to Tiger Den Bar and Grill.
Second.
Move, move by Lee, seconded by Whitehead. Questions, comments? Being none, those in favor of the motion, please give the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, so be it. Thank you so much. That's, that's thank you for opening a business.
Thank you all, too.
Merry Christmas to you. U rally against violence. Ms. Hall and Keisha Johnson, are they here? They're not here tonight, but they, you know, we, I don't need to stress how important every effort need to be made to deal with violence that affects youth and, and the violence that is conducted by our young people. But with the tragedy that occurred in Connecticut, that sent a message, a wake-up message to the whole nation. I am part of the coalition of mayors across this nation. It's a coalition led by Mayor Manino of Boston and Mayor Bloomberg of New York, and those of us who are mayors of cities, we're calling for stricter gun control. I mean, it's just become a serious problem. But these young people want to have a meeting and a rally here talking about violence, and I would suggest that we weigh the cost and join with them in this effort. Today, I, at the invitation of the superintendent, the excellent Council Lady White Moon was there, she can attest to it, so the community needs to do more. And I see the chief here, I'm sure he agrees, and the city manager, this whole crime thing is very important. So, Council Lady Moon, you may want to make a comment.
Well, we attended a forum today at the request of the superintendent of schools, and Dr. Lapiet has a lot of experience in crime prevention. So I'd like to see these two actually merge together. I think they are two different groups, actually, they're about three, because we met with another one.
Oh, good, great.
So hopefully, they'll be able to form an alliance, and we'll be able to start attacking the crime and violence in our community. All three groups we met with, and they are all very, very, very motivated to do something about this issue. So I suggest that we, this is a very prevalent situation that we have here, so let's not charge them for the Ellen Gregg Auditorium on January the twelfth, twenty thirteen.
Thank you, sir.
I suggest that we waive our, until we waive our.
Yes. Maybe they want to second it and make any comments.
Seconding and just add a comment and amendment to request, as Councilwoman Moon has said, that organizations come together. We, I didn't make the meeting this morning, because I had some other obligations, but we've met with two other organizations, in which the chief met with us last week, and Councilwoman Moon, and the chief of security on the campus, on the same issue, and a number of people there, including people from the Board of Education, people from Shawta, throughout the county. So since we have a lot of interest from different organizations, we want to encourage them as much as possible to come together and not dilute all of our efforts. So I do second and ask that we request them to get together with the other organizations so we can make it a united effort as much as possible.
It's been moved to proper second, so would you all coordinate? We've got a law enforcement, all of this is in you all's area. Councilman Lee, you're a part of that as well.
Focus, Mr. Johnson.
Right, okay. So bring them all together. And anyone in the community, TS and others, as Dofan Edwards indicated, we want citizens to serve on these committees with the council persons. So law enforcement, all of you all can work on this one, okay? Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Along with this, Ms. Johnson is looking for some people to address the students who might be able to relate with them. Specifically, you know, if there were people who had a prior life of gang involvement and that sort of thing, she's looking for local people that can talk to the kids and let them know, you know, how they were able to turn their lives around and do some positive things. So, you know, if anybody has any suggestions or recommendations on that, you can pass them on to me, and I'll give them to Ms. Johnson.
You okay?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So it's been moved to proper second. Questions, comments? Those in favor of the motion, please give the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, so be it. We'll weigh the fee. Council updates, street maintenance, Mr. City Manager, you've got all of that, right?
Yes, sir. The normal items include in your agenda, the street maintenance activities report, as well as the city council concerns, and I just included for your information, the city of Tuskegee holiday schedule relative to garbage pickup.
Okay. We move to ordinances?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The limited obligation gasoline tax warrants issued to refund debt series two oh seven, Fraser Lanier Company and Comer Capital Company, one million, one hundred and five thousand refund amount. This is ordinance number twenty thirteen five. Mr. City Manager, you may want to mention what we did today. You followed our instructions of notifying everyone who may have been interested in this bond issue.
At the last meeting, the city council requested staff to set up a meeting for noon on today and invite all the local lending institutions. We did reach out to PNC Bank as well as First Tuskegee. Both of them declined to participate on this particular issue. Today, we have one entity to show up to present to the council. Comer Capital Group made their presentation there. And they worked together with Fraser Lanier Company and Helen Howard, who are bond attorneys. They did make a presentation to the council indicating what would happen as a result of refunding the limited obligation gasoline tax warrants. The intention is to create some additional dollars that can be used for purpose of paving streets. The refund will result in about $35,000 in interest cost savings. The payment that is made the first of each year, this year that payment is made the first of January, the city pays about $90,000 on that issue. This year, that payment will not be made because of the process of refunding the warrants. The issue would be extended for an additional five years as a result of refunding, but it will result in approximately $345,000 for new construction for various road improvements. The issue will mirror the issue that was done in 2007, and the debt service will remain the same.
Okay, so Honorable, and of course, Councilmember Lee, you had already heard the presentation. So I think everyone eventually got there. What is the pleasure of the council? Here's an opportunity for us to lower interest rates. Interest rates are already beginning to go up and save some money and have some resources to deal with these bad streets in our town. We do have some challenges. So, it's before you, council. Yeah, comment or action? Yes.
Well, I'd just like to say that, you know, we have, we've sat back and we've heard the proposal. I think that, you know, it's a good opportunity for us to get some money upfront for much needed street repairs. And my biggest hesitation at first was just, you know, wanting this to be open to, you know, all financial institutions who want, you know, to be able to participate. And as City Manager indicated, First Tuskegee and PNC declined at this time. But also I talked to, well, I talked to someone at First Tuskegee, and they don't want to rule out doing business in the future. But on this one, they aren't able to be a part of it. So with that being said, I think that the group that we have here is capable of doing it and, you know, anything that we can do to speed up the process of repairing streets, I would be supportive of.
Yes, for the comments or? Chair would, yes?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I spoke with our financial officer today, and on his recommendation, I too joined with Councilman Lee thinking that this might be a very good way for us to pass the ordinance of 2013.
Yes. Any other comments for Honorable councilmembers?
Mr. Mayor, I think that the savings that ranges at this time and the opportunity for resources to pave streets is critical. The fact that the interest rates are down and it's a time consideration, so I think that we need to move ahead with this particular ordinance relating to the extension of these warrants.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Lee, Whitehead?
No comments, just ready to move on.
Okay, great. And we have full disclosure. We wanted to make sure that everyone knows that I have no personal interest or involvement with Fraser Lanier. I believe in full disclosure. And the law for securities now make it clear that public officials cannot be consultants to securities companies. So I've worked with them in the past when I was not mayor, but have no relationship with them, either one of these companies. And I want to make that clear. The chair will entertain a motion for adoption of the ordinance, a resolution. Ordinance?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Moved by Council Lady Moon.
Second.
Second by Council Lady Whitehead. Questions, comments? Those in favor of motion, please give the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed is nay, so be it, the ordinance is adopted. Resolutions, appointing a city council liaison to the Tuskegee Mayan County Head Start. Resolution 2013-31. Before we go any further, we want to express our appreciation to Council Lady Moon. You have done this for a number of years and being a distinguished educator all these years, and I know that's where your heart is with the young ones. But you've indicated that you would like to. And I offered, I asked some of the other councilmembers if any of them were interested, and we've got them busy on other council committees. And I indicated that I'd be happy to do it. One reason I'd be happy to do it is because Head Start is kind of, is one that we almost lost a few years ago and we were able to save it and to get it back. And I'd like to work with them and see if we can't get the Department of Health and Human Services to increase the funding for this program. We've always had a goal of 400 students. I think presently we're around 300. Is the Head Start director here tonight?
No, she's not.
Mister, she's not? Okay. But, Mr. City Manager, as you know, they've done a great job with the resources they've had. And so, I'll be happy to serve in that resolution. So, Mr. City Manager, if you would present the resolution?
Resolution is appointing one of the councilmembers to serve as a liaison, resolution 2013-31. And Mayor China Ford has been suggested to serve as a liaison.
Okay, yes, sir.
Is that, do we consider that tonight, City Manager?
Yes.
It's just a resolution, not of permanent nature. And as I said, if anyone else wants to do it, feel free to let me know. It's another, they are an active group and an important group. One of the things they've also got to consider is permanent facility. You know, they've been talking about building a building for some time. In meeting, we had breakfast with the superintendent this morning, and she is going to be talking to the board about some options about various buildings that may be available. And there may be a facility with the Board of Education that may be available for them to consider. Right now, we are leasing Cypio's building downtown for the Head Start headquarters, and we've been doing that for some time. I'm not a strong believer in leasing property. I believe in owning and investing the taxpayers' dollars in public facilities whenever we can. So, the resolution has been presented. It has been moved and properly seconded. Chair will entertain, let it be moved. Chair will entertain that that resolution be adopted. Someone make a motion?
Therefore, I move for adoption of resolution number 2013-31.
Second by Lee. Questions, comments? Those in favor of motion, please give the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed is nay, so be it. Motion is carried. The other one is establishing December 31st, 2012 as a city holiday. It's a skeleton time of the year for us. Secondly, our employees pay a living worth of 15% cut. And that's hurting many of them. So the least we could do is give them 31st off. So that resolution is before you and we'll entertain a motion for its adoption or discussion.
Mr. Mayor, so moved, we adopt December 31st as 2012. It's an official holiday for the city employees and that we get proper notification around. Notice that we have had some notices, but make sure that we get it to the newspaper or wherever we can notify citizens of the alternate dates because we've had some criticism about that in the past, of the alternate dates to pick up the garbage. But there was an excellent notice put out, so we need to make sure that's distributed widely and so the citizens know when to put their garbage out and no other expectations. But I do move that we adopt that date as a holiday for the citizens and get the notifications out.
So moved and properly seconded. Heygood, Lee, questions, comments? Those in favor of motion, please give the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed is nay, so be it. Motion is carried. City Attorney, please, sir?
No report. We do have some specific advice and reporting for you in executive session.
Okay, good. Other business? At this time, the chair will entertain a motion. If you'd like to ask the audience to be patient with us very briefly, we're going to go up for a quick executive session and hear the litigations and discuss personal character and whatever. Would not take any action in executive session. Come back here and report to you our deliberations. I do want to say that Victory Land was opened officially today, and we want to commend them for having the courage to do so. For those who were not there, I can tell you the lines were around the corner. Great enthusiastic turnout. That's one of the battles that's still ahead of us, not for Victory Land per se, but for the gaming industry and for the jobs and for the economic interest of our community. And that's one of the things I like to discuss in executive session. Turns because Attorney General is making some moves to try to still hamper us and would like to close us down, close it down, and close the industry out. Okay, yes, sir, Mr. Attorney.
Before you take your motion in executive session, let me amend my report. I don't like your report saying no report from the city attorney. So the report is this. We continue to monitor and represent the city in the cases that we have mentioned appearances and other cases that the city is involved in. That's our report.
Okay, great.
City Attorney, go ahead. Could we get a brief written statement on those with some kind of update?
Okay, good. Alright, chair will entertain a motion that we adjourn to executive session. And be patient, we'll be right back. And for those who just can't wait, we wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Okay, great. So council, we could quickly. Questions, comments? Those in favor of motion, give the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed is nay, so be it. City's having its annual city and utilities board dinner luncheon on noon. We invite any of you part of the city family, all of you all are. You all sat here and waited on us, so you can join us for lunch. We consider you all family to join with us on Friday at noon here with the employees and other officials of the city. Okay, chair will entertain a motion that we come out of executive session.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Moved by Council Lady Moon. Second by Heygood. Questions, comments? Those in favor of motion, give the sign of aye. Opposed is nay, so be it.
Mr. Mayor, would you just repeat your invitation so that it can be recorded in the minutes? We're in the second session, so it's not in there.
Okay, this coming Friday, we have our Christmas luncheon, and we invite all of you to join us. Good cheer. End of the year. All of you are family, so join with us. We have the utilities board and the council. We're beginning to do these things together so that the two can work closer together and also to send the signal that all of our employees are equal. They are all important. And we're all looking forward to giving them a stipend or a one-time cost of living increase of $100 for each one of them on both sides. But it will be a time for us to express our appreciation to the city employees. So everyone's invited, okay? Good. Now, in the executive meeting, we talked about, one, the transition. Today, we earlier expressed our appreciation to our city manager who will be ending his tenure with us at the end of the year. And we wanted to again express our appreciation to him, and we wanted to also have a smooth transition. So therefore, we discussed in the meeting the need to appoint an interim city manager who could work with Mr. Davis during this transition. That interim person would be able to get with Mr. Davis and go through the closeout procedure and to make an orderly transition and to make sure that we know all of the points that need to be covered. So a smooth transition. We would like to make that decision in terms of who that person would be on this coming Thursday at 11:30 a.m. I mean Friday, I keep it Friday, that's why I need to keep you close, man. Friday at 11:30 a.m. prior to our session here for lunch. Friday at 11:30. And we'd like to, we understand the law. The law clearly states that an interim city manager can serve for 120 days, four months. However, we'd like for this appointment to be for a 60-day period and to immediately begin to advertise for a permanent city manager. So that is what we discussed in the meeting. And based on that, I'd like to announce, Mr. City Manager, that we would like to have another council meeting on Friday at 11:30, this coming Friday, to address that issue. And if you would publicize that and give, do notice so that the public can be informed and as well the press can be informed as well. What else we did? During that, during the city, the executive session, the city attorney gave us an update on legal matters. And I would also like to also put on that agenda, Mr. Attorney, the position of prosecutor for the city. And also, the other judicial and court positions which are now interim, we should be in a position to make a decision there at that particular time. Did I miss anything, Honorable councilmembers? Okay. Yes. Yeah, I'm ready for a motion. Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So moved that we, I would like to move that we entertain the position of interim city manager for a period of 60 days. And at the same time that we advertise immediately for a permanent city manager, that that going to affect the meeting.
There's a move by Councilmember Lodge Heygood?
Second.
Second by Councilman Lee. Questions, comments? Yes, ma'am?
Will that be a person within the county or outside of Mayan County?
Well, we can determine that on Friday. Yeah, it can either be from within or outside or whatever. Yes, we can do that, and we will do that. Further questions or comments? Being none, those in favor of motion, please give the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed is nay, so be it. Also, do we need a motion to deal with the judicial ones? It's just a matter of putting that on the?
Put them on the agenda.
Put them on the agenda, okay? Being no further, is there any further business to come before the council?
I have none, sir.
If not, then we'll give you the honor of making the motion for adjournment until Friday. It is moved and motion to adjourn needs no second. Good night and thank you all so very much for being patient with us. Good night, and thank you all so very much for being patient with us.